Like to call to order the city council workshop for the city of Sagatuck on January 8th, 2025. Jamie, will you call the roll?
Anderson.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Hunsey.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Any agenda changes, additions or deletions? Any guest speakers? It doesn't look like it. Okay, let's take us to public comment on agenda items only, three minute limit. Anyone in the room want to make a comment on agenda items? Anyone on Zoom? All right.
Ken Bertheum.
Okay, 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 so that takes us to our discussion items. Six A is the audit presentation. Ryan, you want to tee that up or have Nikki tee that up?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Council. Ken, I don't know that I've ever attempted to say your name publicly, so how do you say your last name?
Okay, it's Bertheum.
Bertheum, all right. Well, Ken Bertheum, your auditor, longtime auditor, is here to give you a presentation on their audit of the fiscal year 2023 into 2024. So this is a reminder, our fiscal years run July 1st to June 30th. So we're kind of looking back a little bit, but it's all right. Madam Mayor, we'll turn it over to Ken to kind of present the audit, and I'm sure he'll have some page numbers for you to reference.
Excellent, thanks.
Right. Okay. Take it away.
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Pleased to be here to present the audit and discuss it for fiscal year ended June 30, 24, as Ryan said. The audit work went relatively smooth this year. We really encountered no problems, difficulties, or differences. The new treasurer, Nicole, along with help from Plant Moran, Kelly there, were able to help us in everything that we needed, and we got the job done with their assistance. City manager Ryan was also involved, and he was very helpful along the way. We found that the city bookkeeping was in very good shape, as usual. I think Peter left everything in good shape. And we only had three recommended adjusting journal entries, which I think is similar to the prior year. And that small number of adjustments is considered very good compared to other audits that we do. So based on the audit work and the results that we obtained from that, we again issued the standard opinion, standard unmodified report on pages one and two. Going back a little bit, yeah, right there where it said independent. That. This is pages one and two, right before that. Okay, yeah, right there. Independent auditor's report, this is sometimes referred to as the opinion. Okay, so that's really kind of the objective of the whole job that we do. We want to give an opinion on these financial statements after we look everything over, that everything's looking good. It's, 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 we're not saying here that everything is perfect in every way, but we're saying in all material respects, we think the financial position presented here is fairly presented. Okay, we have no exceptions to that. So that's kind of, that's called an unmodified opinion. That's the best report that we can issue, okay? Now, then we head into the report on page seven. This is part of the management discussion and analysis here. Page seven is a condensed comparative statement of activities prepared on a full accrual method of accounting. Okay, this is in the management, M D N A, is the only place you're going to see any comparative numbers like this. So it's always interesting to take a look at this. Here we see that for the year, the net position increased about 1,519,000. Okay, we saw property taxes, property taxes, revenue come in at 3,073,580 up there. Saw an increase there of 261,000. And that was because of the increased S E V, taxable S E V of property in the city. The millage rates were exactly the same as the prior year. Okay, another nice item we saw was investment earnings coming in at about 524,000 compared to 304 the prior year. That's an increase of about 220,000. So that was, that was good because the city has investments. They're with Michigan Class, that's a cooperative that the state of Michigan has set up. And their investments, from what we can tell, are very conservative, and it's a good, solid program, it appears to be. So your investments are, I think, are safe there. Okay, but you made some good interest because interest rates have been up, as you know. Okay, so moving ahead on to page 10. Here we have the statement of net position. This is the big picture. It's a snapshot of where the city stood on June 30 in terms of assets and liabilities. I think here we see a very healthy position. The city held cash and investments there, you can see, of about 10,800,000 altogether. You have no unfunded pension liability. You're actually showing a net pension asset of 108,000 there. That means that you're a little bit overpaid, you get, that's good, because that can fluctuate from year to year depending on how the MERS trust fund does. And you have a very manageable amount of long-term debt showing there. Altogether, long-term debt, including the current portion of long-term debt, is about 1.6 million. That's for the 2017 street improvement bonds that you're paying back. They'll be fully paid off in about five years, it appears. You're paying only about 2% interest on that debt. So there's probably no incentive to pay it off early. The city is collecting a property tax, as you know, to service that debt. Okay? And then moving ahead to page 12. Here we see a balance sheet for the governmental funds. Now, this is prepared on a modified accrual method of accounting. The focus here is just to see what you have in terms of current available resources, like current assets and current liabilities. There's no long-term debt there, no pension and no capital assets. And the fund balance is the main number you want to focus on here. For general fund, it shows a very healthy condition, I think. You have approximately 5,200,000 in unassigned fund balance there. This amount is very adequate and healthy when compared to the annual general fund expenditures budget of about 4 million. So you got enough money there to take care of next year. Okay, the street funds also came in pretty good with a fund balance, total fund balance money of about 3 million. And that's available and restricted to be used for street improvements and street maintenance. Okay, and then moving ahead to page 15. Two more here. See, there you see, for the governmental funds, you see the statement of revenues, expenditures, expenditures and change in fund balance for the year. As you can see, the general fund reports total revenue about 4,097,000. And expenses came in at 3,696,000. So you had a change in fund balance, fund balance. It's where revenues exceeded the expenses by 400,903. So you had a good year. So, you know, why did it come in that big? Well, we saw that the property tax revenues were about 203,000 more than prior year. And other revenues, like you had a contribution revenue in there under other revenue of 160,000. There was a contribution, I think that was for the parks and rec there. So that accounts for some of that. Why, why it was such a large change? Okay, and then finally to page 18. Here we have, there's another fund that you have, other than the governmental funds, you have a proprietary fund or internal service motor pool fund. So this fund owns equipment that is rented out to the other funds, like the street funds. The street funds could use equipment but have to pay rent. That's required by Act 51, M DOT, they require that it be handled that way, where you charge rent to those funds. And the motor pool has a nice fund balance, too. You had in cash and investments about 826,000. And that's available for equipment purchases and that sort of thing. Okay, so basically, that's my report, and I, I want to thank you for choosing Bertheum and Company, and I welcome any questions or comments.
Questions, comments?
I, I just want to say, I think you did a wonderful job with this. I've been working with audits with the inner urban for about six or seven years now, and we have the pleasure of working with the folks that help us out there as well. I think you've done a great job here.
Well, thank you.
Carol?
Yeah, same echo. Echo your comments there. I mean, it was a great report, and I guess more importantly, the, you know, financial results look very strong. I mean, anytime you can chalk up 18.3% increase in revenue with only a 0.4% increase in expenses is a good thing. And top of that, reducing long-term debt, improving the balance sheet across the board, and showing pretty much all the funds improving in their, in their balances. If this was a public company, the share price would be going up. I wish I could put my name on this. Kudos to the past council members that are responsible for these financial results.
Yes, council members and employees, yeah.
And I, it's, it's a remarkable result. Net position up 1.5 million. That's double what our net position was in 2023, and even more than the 1.2 million surplus we had in 2022. So to me, it looks like we're in very good shape, and as the auditor said, in a very healthy position to do things like invest in infrastructure and also to defend the city's interests in the unfortunate event when people decide to engage in litigation against us. I feel like we're in a very strong position.
Right.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank, Ken, I've got a question on the statement of net position under proprietary funds under the motor pool.
Yes.
Can you help me understand which of these line items accounts for the total value of the assets that we have in the motor pool? Is it the capital assets being depreciated net?
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's book value. What that is, is, you know, that's the original cost of the, of the equipment, it's things you have in there minus the accumulated depreciation. And it's not really fair value, it's just book, book value, you know. That's what that is. So that's, there is a depreciation schedule with that, all of that equipment listed on there. And you can, you could, you know, you have access to that, that's done out there internally. And you can see what equipment all makes that, that up.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Ken. The reason for the question is, my past experience with particularly this fund has been that there was a schedule that the staff and the manager particularly would manage in terms of when equipment would need to be replaced.
Right.
Dump truck, for instance, which we think did two years ago. That, that schedule is incredibly important for us because to the point that's being made by the other council members, the city's in a fine, in a very good financial position. However, there's a lot on our plate that's coming our way, and, and what I want more visibility into is, okay, what is out there that we need to replace? That could be buildings, that could be, which is not the motor pool. But the city's got a lot of assets, and the net position, as Councilmember Dean mentioned, has gone up. Things that maybe we've done, or perhaps just the market itself. However, I think this is an opportunity for us to step back and say, okay, what exactly do we anticipate coming in the next few years? We know infrastructure is becoming more clear, but all the assets that the city has, replacement of buildings, you know, we've got an interior project down here in City Hall, which has been our books for, anybody remember the year we first started talking about that? At least 25 years ago. So that's just more of a comment about we're in a position that we can begin to talk about where we need to be thinking about money's going to go for these particular funds, especially as it relates to assets.
Yeah, yeah, the city has depreciation schedules for all of the, all of the buildings and all that. They, they have that there internally.
Right, and, right, and where I would like to see that then go, and this more comment for the manager, is that we need a capital improvement plan, which includes infrastructure, but as well as everything, water heaters, roofs, walls, I mean, you name it. That money adds up pretty darn fast, so that, that should definitely be something that's on our radar to begin planning for.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, it's good timing, literally just Scott and I yesterday had our monthly one-on-one and talked about greater asset management, planning, and expanding the scope of the C I P to be more comprehensive. In fact, this, this morning, I think the treasurer shared with Scott our more comprehensive lists of those assets, so we could kind of start that work. It'll, you know, take some time to put those things together, but, but you're spot on, yep.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate comments. Congratulations to Ken and to Nikki, our new treasurer, as well as I'm sure some help was, was gained from Peter Stanislawski, our previous treasurer, just to bring this to where it needs to be. And yeah, pleased with the results. We have a lot of work we still need to do, but in a good position to start it.
One thing I'd like to additional that I'd like to mention was that on, on page 12 of the report, where we show the general fund balance sheet there, under fund balance, we're showing committed fund balance for parks, 1 million. That, that 1 million, that number was, was in there in the prior year. Okay, that, but you did spend a bunch of money last year on the parks, but there was no official reduction of the amount of fund balance, you know, that would be designated as committed. So you might want to take a look at, a fresh look at that for this year, like how much of the fund balance should be committed for future park improvements and that type of thing. Okay, that, the commitment has to come from the city council, you know.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Ken, for bringing that up, because that's a comment that I had made previously, that that has to be looked at. And now that you pointed out the line item for Spear, Spear, Spear Street Boat Launch, I would like to revisit that as well, because I don't think anything's been spent on the Spear Street Boat Launch since the high water in 2021, maybe, whenever it was.
Yeah.
Certainly has some.
It could use some help.
Yep.
I was curious about the parks as well, that that was still at 1 million after we had spent money on the park. And, and I wasn't, I, maybe I don't remember, but I know we have to approve every expenditure like that, like we did. Would, did that just come out of our regular fund balance instead of the 1 million, or?
Yeah, yeah, it did. Yeah, the, the committed fund balance, you have to actually make a, during the fiscal year, you can't do it after, you have to, during the fiscal year, you have, you have to say, you know, what you want that fund balance commitment to be stated at, like this. So there, what, it's, to my knowledge, there was no formal resolution or, you know, directive to change that, so it was left at the 1 million. But, you know, it's, it's something you can easily change. The council just, you know, decides how much that number should be, and then, and then it gets reflected the way you want it.
Yeah, the conversation that I had was, and I think I covered this, last time this came up, was that, you know, I talked with Plant Moran about that commitment, and, you know, the advice that essentially was, was given was that, and it's kind of reflective of the notes that are in the audit as well, right? That, you know, had we actually had a, you know, a deficit or needed to actually use our fund balance last year as we were originally budgeting for, well, then that project, that playground project, was going to be what ultimately led to us using some fund balance. You know, that would have made sense to, you know, take that from that, you know, parks committed fund balance. But in the end, we ended up adding to our, our general fund balance. Because we weren't, you know, needing fund balance, they'll really fund anything this year. You know, the recommendation from Plant Moran was to, you know, to not reduce it. Given that we also have in this current budget year, you know, a half a million dollars in, in work, some of it's going to be pushed to next fiscal year at this point. But the Mount Bald Head bathrooms are something that, that could come from that commitment. Then the upper platform at Mount Bald Head can come from that as well. So, so if you want that, you know, you know, specific, you know, commitment reduced for those, those projects, we can certainly bring those resolutions forth to do so. There's, there's going to be no shortage of parks-related projects that will, will need that money.
Oh, I agree, I agree. I, no problem with, you know, the playground being taken out of the fund balance. That was something that really needed to be done. But I think going forward, we, we need to earmark that and have a discussion about really where we want to spend that money.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, I, I think this is absolutely wonderful. Good job to the staff and everybody that's allowed this to happen, as well as kind of surprising in the economy that we have that it looks this good. And it couldn't be timed any better than our strategic planning session coming up, because there is money there, and it would be nice if we did some way, like Gregory said, put it specifically to something, because when people, if they come in and look like, oh, here's a million dollars, what are you going to do with it? So it's better to have something in place to answer problem, or answer questions, and then if you don't use it, it goes on to next year. And that doesn't come out of what's coming out next year, that's on top of what's going to be in next year. So I think this is great.
Lauren?
Yeah, just going forward, knowing that the Mount Bald Head upper platform was going to be so expensive, it just made sense to, you know, leave that money there to be able to pay for that project. And it might be, be over a couple of fiscal years because of, you know, how that project will go forward. So I see that happening, and I look forward to that. It's a healthy fund balance, and we have very expensive projects going forward. The Maple Street project is huge, and, you know, a big chunk of that money is going to be going towards that project, so.
Yep. Great. Only thing I will add, it's always nice to, to be in a strong position. You can be a lot more strategic when you're doing well, and, you know, thanks to staff and our auditors, Plant Moran, city manager, it's been a good year. Or it was a good year. Anything else before we let Ken get on with his evening, Russ?
Yeah, just a question, and I don't recall from experience here, is at Monday's meeting, do we have to take action on this? Do we have to accept the audit as presented? Is there any action needed at this point?
You don't have to, it's filed with the states. If you want to formally, you know, you know, receive the report in some sort of fashion, we can certainly set that up for you, but.
No, and the reason I ask that is because I really think this presentation we saw today really ought to be put on the agenda for a council meeting as opposed to a workshop, because we'll have better attendance at a, at a regular council meeting. We'll have, probably some of the press will be there as well, and I think it's important for this, and this is good information, to make sure it gets in front as many people as possible. So that would be my suggestion going forward. I don't know what other council members think, but I, this seems like more of a council.
No, I think, I, I agree with Councilman Gardner. I mean, we should promote this. I mean, this is year-on-year budget surplus. We, we, you know, doubled last year's surplus. It's even higher than 1.2 million in 2022. So, I mean, I think it speaks volumes to the, the financial management and our stewardship, staff stewardship, and this council's stewardship of the city's finances.
Madam Mayor? I'm sorry. I agree with that, and I go back to remembering what Councilmember Dean said about when I see the money sitting there, I'm wondering why it's not going out, you know, I'm wondering why my taxes don't go down. And people are going to wonder that when they see this increased revenue. So I think we strategically have some kind of response when we do put this out.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, you know, defer to the city manager, too, or collaborate with him, but I think coming out of our strategic planning session, if we can get some publicity around what our priorities are, our financial health, that might be an opportunity to, you know, do this.
Go ahead.
I think, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, yeah, the strategic planning, to make sure that we have specific projects labeled for this, for this money. We can say strategic planning, and that's an overall umbrella, but to really have specific projects. So say, for example, parks with this 1 million, yes, we are going to use this towards that. And, and just really, really pin down on the specifics. I think that would be great.
I think there's also something to be said with, with the rainy day fund. You know, given what our neighbors have had to deal with on Ferry Street, you know, that, they suddenly got hit with a, you know, what, $300,000 bill to make an emergency repair. You know, we could have had a very close call just outside City Hall when the valve broke. Unfortunately, it wasn't any worse, but, you know, there's a water main, a city water main, not just someone's pipe into their home that's probably 100 years old running under, under Butler Street. So, you know, having a healthy rainy day fund is also, I think, probably prudent for this council, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we, we can certainly, for future years, invite Ken to your regular meeting for that presentation instead of workshop. That, that's not a problem, and I, I think you're going to have a pretty robust discussion at your next workshop meeting with, you know, your engineer about the Maple Street project. And once you, we go through those numbers, you'll be able to identify, I think, quite quickly where some of these dollars are going to be going, so.
Yeah.
Great, anything else?
Thanks, Ken.
Yeah, I appreciate you joining us.
Thank you much, okay.
All right, that takes us to discussion item 6B, revenue and expenses through second quarter. And welcome, Nikki. It's nice to have you with us.
Thank you. So I took a peek through, and we're about halfway through the year. And a lot of the items, if you look at the percentages, they are under 50%, so that seems to be doing well. The items that aren't, most of those are understandable. Oval Beach, most of it comes in July, August, September, that type of thing. Yeah, we got May and June, but they're kind of rubbing up, so it does make sense that they would be more than 50%. That's as an example. On the plus side, we've trended over in some of our revenue sources, penalties and interest. Oval Beach, and there's two months to go, yay! So more money, sorry. We received a variety of grants and donations that weren't budgeted. For instance, the C V B for the holiday lighting, Mel Foil Grant. There was, the Venetia Festival gave us some monies. That type of thing has come in, and so those things weren't budgeted, and yet we got the money. And again, we like money. I like money. On the other side, that we do have some expenditure lines that are also trending higher than expected. Some of which is due to the, to inflations and other items, items that weren't in the budget, like the contractual services for Plant Moran, that type of thing. City Hall had some capital outlays with their irrigation, the concrete fix, which I think we were just talking about, landscaping, and the gutters got fixed and things like that. Public Works put up a bunch of signs, no parking signs along the hill. So that's going to hit as well. Oval Beach's capital outlay of Wi-Fi and the radio replacements also turned out to be kind of hefty. So, but we'll also be monitoring these line items and looking at making fixes, maybe in my procedures, like reallocating Scott's time division and the Mount Bald Head restrooms. I put it in Oval Beach, but it's really been budgeted for parks. So that's kind of what's going on. That's what I got.
Questions, Russ?
Yeah, thank you, Nikki, for being here. Good presentation, again, I'm just glad, I'm, I'm very pleased to see us complying with our charter, which requires that we see this every quarter, so thank you very much for making sure this happens. In terms, you mentioned allocating Scott, I believe that's probably Scott Herbert, correct?
It is. It is Scott Herbert.
And so so my question on that, not necessarily about Scott, but tell us a little bit about how time is allocated. So when you've got all these different funds, how do, how's it determined to where?
The the DPW guys, they hand me pieces of paper when it says City Hall, or it does say, it'll say streets, it'll it'll say parks, Oval Beach, those are all items, motor pool, those are all items that they might allocate their time to. And so they'll just, you know, I spent an hour fixing the truck, or I, you know, that type of thing. So the, so when I get them, I follow what's in there, making some, you know, I look at the descriptions as well and try to make a reasonable assumption. But I'm going to check with Peter because I'm wondering if Scott, if he says City Hall really gets put into Public Works because he's not actually here working at City Hall, he's doing it at a meeting, or or he's here talking to you in one of the council meetings. So that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, thank you. And again, it's not even a criticism, just more of a just curiosity. And to that point, in this day, these days of automation and everything else that we have available to us in terms of tools, handing you handwritten pieces of paper seems to be pretty inefficient. So I I'm just wondering if, and again, you probably don't have an answer, but you know, this might be something to talk with with the DPW, and any really, frankly, for any city employee, as to how to document that time a little bit more efficiently, maybe, I don't know, I'm just, I think we can probably find a better way to do that. And not a criticism, just more of an observation.
We talked about it. So, yeah, it's on it's on the radar. And that's, you know, we, you know, you know, we've had a treasurer change. Peter did a great job for for many years. But with, you know, a change comes, you know, some fresh eyes and maybe an updated way of, you know, gathering certain information. And so, yeah, right now, she's being handed slips, then she has to input it to an Excel sheets, and then and also input it into, you know, payroll and to be SNA. And so there's there's multiple layers to it. But yeah, can we automate that through some some other method? Certainly something we've talked about. And I think there's a lot of, you know, tech-related improvements we'd like to make, including even online payments, right? So that's.
And that could definitely be a strategic item to discuss in terms of support of one of our goals and objectives that we still need to set. So thank you. Not a criticism, just more of an observation on what I'm hearing. So thank you.
Sure. Other question?
Yeah, at the radio station, we have velocity. And there's quite a few apps out there that help with tasks and keeping track of tasks. I wonder if there's a low cost app or software that we could look into where folks could just grab their phone.
What do you mean, do it on your phone?
Workers could say, okay, half hour on the truck, an hour at Oval Beach, or whatever. That might be a great way. And so in that 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 information goes right into a spreadsheet where, you know, workable documents. So.
Spot on. Yeah. No, good suggestion. I got that down.
Other questions? Nikki, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great to have the information.
Thank you.
Okay, it takes us to 6C, temporary placemaking installation at Cook Park. Lisa, or Ryan, you want to tee that up, and then Lisa will.
Yeah, and I'd love to tee Lisa up on this, you know, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is working with the Sagittuck Center for the Arts on some placemaking placemaking projects. And they're they're interested in the temporary use of Cook Park for a pretty interesting installation idea. So if it's all right, yeah, we'll turn it over to Lisa to maybe present what they're thinking.
Hi, thanks.
Hi, Lisa.
I'm not sure I can add a whole lot more to it yet, because we're in the process of working, as Ryan said, with the SCA, and they're putting together an RFP that will go out to area artists. So we're right now kind of trying to get the location, the venue down first. And then when we have the venue secured, then we give all those specifications to the artists so that they know how big can this installation be? How how tall does it need electricity? Does it, you know, when does it have to be taken down? All of that. We're looking, as I think Ryan's sheet says, an installation of November of 2025, and hopefully leaving it up through March. If any of you have ever been downtown Grand Rapids to the world of winter, it's amazing. And this is, think about this on a very small scale, like one installation. But that's what we're going for, something that people can come and see at night as well as during the day. It'll be photo op. Hopefully, it'll be interactive. These are all the items that we're going to be putting into the RFP.
Russ?
Can you guarantee snow?
Never.
No, more serious question. I've heard wonderful things about the Grand Rapids event, and want to make it up there to see it as an example. Do you have any idea at this point what the city's financial commitment might be, if any, on this? I mean, other than we have some DPW and and some other?
Correct. Other than whatever support we may need from DPW, and if it requires electricity, that's that's all I can foresee. The CBB is footing the bill for this.
Where is the electric at Cook Park? You know, I know where it is at the other parks. But do we have a, do we have a box there somewhere?
There's some electric in the area. And we certainly have the, you know, the docks, we own the docks outside of Cook Park. And so there's there's pedestals there, you know, and talking with Scott about this, we may need some upgrades. And some of that was kind of planned anyway. So some, I could find out for you. I'm not exactly sure.
What do they plug the tree in?
So.
It's right by the sign, isn't it? The Coughlin sign?
Cook Park down here.
Oh, it's at Cook Park. Oh, sorry.
We thought it would be a good time.
Thinking Coughlin Park.
Yeah, a good time to put it there.
Yeah.
Kind of in the interim while you guys decide what to do for the big willow tree.
Well, maybe the owners of the Butler might be interested in a community contribution.
Or, you know, off the cuff, you know, when we, when we maybe build a fireplace and gathering area.
Love that idea.
We could put electric there.
Love that idea. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I appreciate that the CBB and the SCA are looking at something to do in the winter, you know, to give tourists a reason to be here in the winter as much.
Part of our strategic plan.
Yes, which I know that is, you know, the shoulder seasons, the off seasons. This is a great idea. And I and I fully support whatever ideas come your way.
Thank you.
And I'm also in support. I think it's a great idea. Anything to, you know, push out the season, you know, for tourism is great. And this, I think, certainly would be helpful in terms of, you know, attracting people to the lodging and to the business opportunities in town. I'm wondering, though, if there's an opportunity, given that this is at one of our parks, to engage with Parks and Public Works Committee, since Scott Herbert's on it, to showcase some of our other parks as well. There's some really wonderful winter walks that are available that people probably don't fully appreciate in the winter. I believe we'll have the trails at the airport property in decent shape. By then, we might even be able to have a cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, nature hike opportunity, you know, to sort of balance it out, because you can obviously have a great time shopping and going to the bars and restaurants. But winter recreation in Sagittuck could be.
Definitely something we would promote.
You'd be interested in that?
Absolutely. Chris Clark just reached out yesterday via email, letting me know about all the new trails that are in the works, so that the next time we print the new hiking guide, it'll be updated.
The nice thing, if you haven't visited it yet, is the airport property is, the trails that are currently there that are being improved are fairly gentle in terms of people being able to cross-country ski. I've taken people cross-country skiing at the state park and.
Challenging. We tried to do a photo shoot there once.
It's not for everybody, nor is nor is skiing down the backside of Mount Bald Head, although.
It's been done.
Although people do it. Yes, yes. So just, yeah.
Great. Other questions, comments? Thanks so much, Lisa. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you for considering.
So I understand it. Just to make sure we're all clear, I understand that council's open to the use of the space for, you know, insulation similar to this. And so, you know, the final plans will have to run through historic district commission and and then the Parks and Public Works Committee to give you a recommendation and on final approval. So you'll see the the final plans back here. But I'll work with Lisa on any questions she has in the meantime. So.
Great. It's exciting. Okay, takes us to public comments. Anybody in the room like to make a comment? It could be about anything. Anyone online want to make a comment? All right, closed public comments. It takes us to agenda number eight, closed session. Anyone would like to make a motion to move into closed session?
Uh, Mayor? Motion to move into closed session pursuant to MCL 15 dot 268 H to discuss confidential written legal opinion regarding the city ethics policy.
Second? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Discussion.
Okay.
I oppose going into closed session for this discussion. I do not understand why this should need to go into closed session. It's a review of our ethics policy from the attorney. I don't think there's an investigation involved. I just, I don't see the need for a closed session on this.
Okay. Chris, you had a comment too?
Yes, I kind of follow that. And maybe the attorney would have a reason that they recommended this, that maybe they could share with us.
Okay.
I'm also, now that you bring that up, I'm wondering too, is there a reason why it has to be in a closed session or?
Yeah. And so Lizzie Helen, Lizzie Mills has been working with Brian and me on reviewing the ethics policy. So Lizzie, thank you for joining us in person tonight. We appreciate that.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you and to meet the new members for the first time. We are offering this as a confidential written legal opinion for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's to provide additional background that, I'm sorry, complete background for what the ethics concepts are that we typically encounter in municipal government to outline what your obligations are. Two, to ensure, of course, that everybody is familiar with what the history of the ethics policies are here in the in the city of Sagittuck. Neither of those two things are specifically exclusive to attorney client privileged communication. In the context of recommendations regarding the charter and its application or interrelationship to your ethics policy or an ethics policy that you might wish to bring forward, we do have local governments that typically prefer, at least to have the initial conversation and question answer opportunity in closed session. And then, of course, any discussion on potential changes to your ethics policy would certainly occur in open session. We would certainly provide recommendations to you through the course of our legal opinion and also during your discussion in open session, were that to occur. Because, of course, the adoption of any changes to a policy such as an ethics policy or anything else would happen in open session.
And so my support for doing, having some closed session time is, when I look at policy changes, I always like to bump it up against, you know, where are we today? What are some future potential scenarios? And what are some past scenarios we've encountered, you know, related to ethics? And how might, you know, how would that play out with the proposed changes we're making? And given, you know, sort of the range of things that I expect we would at least individually be thinking about could include, for example, past personnel situations we've encountered, or, you know, other things that it wouldn't be appropriate to do in an open session. And it really gives us an opportunity to confer with council to address some specific issues or situations that we, where we want to be more specific than we can do in open session. Russ?
I'm going to be a bit more simplistic about this. Lizzie, thanks for being here today. I still do not agree to go into closed session on this. I am not interested in revisiting individual circumstances. I have put out there at least three or four examples of experiences I've had with potential ethical violations at the city council level as well as at the city. I don't wish to go into detail about those, even in closed session. There's no sense revisiting the past. Any review of an ethics review should be done in completely open session. I see absolutely no, I just don't, I just, I'm not.
I don't disagree, Russ, that the proposed changes and all of that needs to be in open. I mean, so it's not, instead of an open session, we do a closed session, it's we do a closed session if we want to have conversations with our attorney about issues that, you know, might be sensitive and we shouldn't be in open session. Or, you know, but we definitely need to discuss all of the proposed changes in open session. So I don't disagree with that. Chris?
Can I ask you what specific things that we would maybe bring up that should be in a closed session? Like the mayor talked about past employees, should that be something we don't talk about publicly? It should always be in a closed session because of possible legal problems?
Yeah, I'll answer that in two parts, right? One is the generic, and then second is the more specific to this issue. So generically speaking, in local government, we have the challenge of being the employer and also the public body who has governmental operations to run. And typically, when we're talking about personnel matters, we, in particular, in a city government where the charter so designates it, those things happen by and through the manager's office unless it's about the manager. And then, of course, we are here. To the extent that some personnel matter would come before this council, every staff member up to and including the city manager has the opportunity to request a closed session for any discussion of charges, complaints, or evaluative comments regarding that in closed session. And then the council would have the opportunity to approve that on a majority vote. So there is this framework in context under the Open Meetings Act and general operations that those conversations will probably take case, take place in a closed session, unless there's a specific and compelling reason that the council feels as a majority that it should occur in open session. Fairly consistent with what we'll sometimes hear in the private sector as, you know, it's a personnel matter, we don't talk about that. That's kind of one of those pieces. You all have the difficult job of balancing what is public and relevant when we're talking about city staff and city activity. So you have a vehicle for it to be discussed in personnel, personnel matters in closed session, and that is typically utilized across the state in our in our experience. As to this particular issue and the extent to which closed session discussion of something personnel related may arise, it is possible. The legal opinion is structured to outline for you what the background and definitions of ethics typically are here in the state of Michigan when it comes to local government. Remind of particular statutory obligations that you have or frameworks that exist. It is also going to talk with you about a couple provisions of the charter where applicable, because there are some pieces of the charter and policy decisions that have been made that you all may want to have discussion about. And then it will close with discussion of what are some of the opportunities that city government, among other types of local government, have when it comes to addressing ethics related issues. That is what I envision. What I understand from the mayor is a, I think, a recognition of natural inclination in those conversations to say, well, I'm thinking of this because of X, Y, Z scenario. I have not structured it as such.
Tell me that again. You've not structured that. So, sorry. So those things, well, isn't that kind of what we're trying to find out if we can do or not? X, Y, and Z, because this is what happened.
I am suggesting to you that in the discussion of the legal opinion, I could foresee it being possible that a member, although, for instance, council member Gardner says, I'm not looking to get into specifics, that's fine. But it's certainly possible that in trying to pull out details or discuss the analysis that we have provided, someone might bring to bear. I'm thinking of this example, what, how would that play out under this type of a process or change to our policy? And I think that's where the potential rub is, if I understand the mayor correctly.
That's a good summation. Thanks. Russ?
I feel very comfortable having discussions in public session about scenarios. I mean, I don't, I don't feel any need to go back and use specific examples. Scenarios are easy to draw up. As a matter of fact, the Attorney General of the state of Michigan actually has a suggested ethics policy that the local governments can choose to adopt. I mean, that would be a roadmap for me. What I've simply been asking for is a review of the current ethics policy and development of a more robust code of conduct and also an ethics policy that reflects current standards, doesn't include anything regarding social media use, et cetera. That, to me, is all open discussion. I see absolutely no value in going to closed session. As a matter of fact, I see some damage as a result of that because of the perception in the community that, huh, why is council going behind closed doors for ethics review? Is there something going on that we need to know about?
What'd they do?
What'd they do?
Well, anybody have anything to say before we call the vote?
I, both of you, you've got a great point, Chris. And, you know, there are people that do talk on the street, you know, what they do. I have no problem, honestly, going into closed session myself.
I guess.
But but let's make it short and quick, and then let's get back open and talk about it.
I'll say this in public session right now. 99.9% of this talk about ethics is politically motivated wind shut material that's been used in the elections. So I will be in favor of going in closed session, and we can have a very frank discussion as a council.
I would want to know what Lizzie would suggest as far as, you know, the kind of discussions that we're having, if it makes more sense to be in closed session. And, you know, what you've recommended will be an open session, you know, but we can ask questions about, you know, personnel matters, litigation, things that we can't talk openly. And I just, I want to make sure in closed session that we have an opportunity to ask some of those questions. That's, that would be the only reason why I'd want to go into closed session.
Yeah, pretty much the same thing. I mean, I think I feel a little bit more comfortable on our initial discussions, especially if we have recommendations from council, that, you know, we can be a little bit more free with our discussions in closed session, knowing full well that we're going to expose whatever comes out of this in an open meeting. So I think it's a prudent step to take. And yes, there may be some visibility issues for some of our constituents out there, but it's the right thing to do. And that's what I would support.
Madam Mayor, I would want to take, I take exception with Scott Dean's comment. Madam Mayor, I would want to take, I take exception with Scott Dean's comment. There's no political motivation behind this. I've been talking about this topic for going on three years. There's no political motivation. This is an opportunity for the city to do better for its citizens, for its council, for its employees. If that's politically motivated, call it that, but that's not what I view it as. This is an opportunity to improve the way we do things.
I will go on the record as saying this is highly politically motivated. It's a witch hunt. It's a bunch of red herrings. And it's once again, an attempt as we move toward the 2025 November election to distract the public in Sagatuck from the number one issue, which is protecting our neighborhoods, our short-term rental regulations and our 20% cap. That's what it's all going to be about among the voters that are paying attention. There are many people though, fortunately, they're in a minority, that will continue to try to create doubts and sow distrust in our city government through these canards, these red herrings, these witch hunts around ethics, which are completely baseless.
I disagree. I have to say.
I do too. I think that's infuriating.
I've got the floor. I disagree. I do feel that short-term rentals and an ethics discussion, I don't see how they, how they relate to each other.
Nope.
At all in any of our dealings. I know Russ has been talking about an ethics review since before our short-term rental.
I want, I want us to all take turns talking and not talk over each other. So Gregory, why don't you finish what you were saying?
And like I said, I don't see a connection with the short-term rental topic and the, the ethics review. Again, ethics review, I think is, is long-term, has been long coming. It's been a long time since we've had an ethics review. And I think it should be something we look at every five to 10 years regardless of what's going on.
Actually, we, just as a point of clarity, we had, the attorneys did a review of the policy last year. So again, we haven't gone through this formal process and asked for specific.
A formal process with council.
Okay. I, Chris?
I would just say up until council member Dean went off the rails, I was going to go, yeah, let's do closed, but you brought it up, let's do it in open. Let's go after this witch hunt people that you say are there.
That's not the vote we have on the record.
Let's call the vote.
Can I, can I make one last comment?
You may.
The only ethics investigation that has been conducted in this city in recent years was on me, Gregory Muncy, and former council member Logan White, unbeknownst to us until after the fact.
I, those were not ethics, those were not ethics investigations. Those were conflict of interest, which is like, and it, there was no formal investigation. Every single one of us was looked into to make sure we didn't have a conflict of interest.
Then why was the report only outlining the three of us? And when I asked the attorney at the time, he said he was only asked to investigate Logan White, Gregory Muncy, and Russ Gardner.
So, and Russ, I said this in a past meeting, I had been asked, and I don't think I was the only councilperson asked, by constituents if, if Gregory, because of his work with Milpond over the years, or you with a recent short-term rental license, had a conflict. Somebody asked me a question. I didn't know and I'm not the lawyer to weigh in on that. And so I passed, I passed that on. So it wasn't an investigation, it was answering a constituent's question.
And admittedly, I got an email from a constituent about Gregory. I didn't know the answers, so I did pass it along to the attorneys because I felt like that was my, that was my due diligence.
What an investigation is?
It was just to say yes or no. Do you have a conflict?
I got this question. How do I answer it?
He investigated if I was ethically able to vote on something. So to me, that's an investigation of my ethics.
Let's call the vote, Jamie.
Okay.
Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
You.
To go into closed session.
Oh, yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right.
You're welcome.
It said we can go up to $25.
Twenty-five.
Maybe we should have a jar that we keep here.
Okay, this is mine, I think, eight, number nine. Okay.
So council is back in open session. We're just picking up some materials. So now we will open up for discussion on proposed framework and edits and then process for reviewing our updates to our ethics, ethical standards of contact policy. Yes.
I think it was a wonderful discussion. I'm glad that we did go in. Thank you for mentioning going into closed session. I think even Chris agreed it was good for us to do that. Good for us to hear some of the feelings and that needed to get out on the table. I appreciate that. I would like to propose that we continue working on this. This is a lot of information that I have here and, and, and to look at it and to possibly maybe make suggestions of changes for our next workshop. Just give us a couple more weeks to look at it.
Yeah, it might be helpful since people are rejoining us to kind of recap where we are. And that's that the city attorney has provided us, listening to the, the input from council members, provided us with some recommended changes to our ethics policy. We have red line versions to look at that. And the areas that council agreed that kind of what we're solving for are making sure that our policy is current with other best practice municipal ethics policies. We talked about a process for making sure we have a good, clear, workable process for reporting concerns, whether that's from citizens or from council members. And so she's made some proposed edits there. We want to have further discussions or we had some discussion about what is protected speech among, well, obviously among the public, but among council members, you know, our First Amendment rights. And, and then sort of what people can expect from us. And one idea we floated, and Gregory, we'll get back to, you know, the timetable, is, is whether it would be helpful, and again, we can, we don't have to, this is for discussion and thought, whether it would be helpful to have some facilitation on how we can work better as a team. I mean, clearly, there are pretty strong political and policy differences here. And that's only going to continue. But we do, we are a council. We were elected to do the business of the city. And so we need to learn how to provide, we need to learn how to work together productively and constructively, you know, hear each other's differences and then accept the vote of the majority of council and move on. I don't know, you know, I have to say, I don't know personally whether I think we can, I think there, there's definitely some trust issues. And I think, you know, we should give thought, is that something we think we can do better with? Maybe or maybe not. I do think though, it, there is so much divisiveness in the community if we could try to help not throw gasoline on that, that would be helpful. But again, I don't know, since I think it, you know, I don't know if that's possible. And we'll get into election season before we know it and, and then it becomes really hard. So I would ask us to think about that and we might consider that when we talk more. Scott?
Madam Mayor, if I may, thank you. I appreciate what the city's attorney, I mean, we're so lucky to have a specialist attorney who's an absolute expert in human relations and employment law. And I think, Lizzie, I think you were well chosen to help us in our review of this ethics policy. I like what you have suggested so far to us. I would ask that you continue to hold the pen on this and continue to track changes that may come in from this, this council so we can all review and know what changes are being suggested by whom. So we can, we can look at that very closely. I think that will help me in my, in my reviews of this.
Lizzie, is that a process that, that works for you is, you know, council will take this away? We will all review it in, in more depth. We will have feedback. I think, you know, as a group, we need to discuss that feedback, but send at least thoughts to you. I would appreciate having a copy of it or Ryan a copy of it, just so that we can kind of track the changes and know what you're working on. But I look to you for process recommendations there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think before this council first is a decision about how you might wish to go about engaging in the solicitation of feedback, whether you wish to have that be a working process that you do here with the policy in front of you and saying, okay, here's what I like and don't like, here's what I might like to add. You could do that in, in session, certainly. I have also experienced where some folks will create a committee that they wish to explore with that of council members or how you wish to do that. And I have also done it exactly as I've just heard, which is material is supplied to the city attorney or perhaps to the city attorney, mayor, and manager for collection and redistribution to support your further discussion. Any of those are acceptable means of accomplishing it. And so stated another way, there's not one legal correct way for you to go about addressing this. And we will, of course, continue to support in every way that you think is appropriate.
I'm in. Get us around the quorum issue?
I'm sorry?
Does that get us, are we okay with, with all of us writing in for something without considering it an open meeting?
It is not deliberation. So what I, what I envision, I'm not sure what council member Dean envisioned, I can't speak for him, but what I envision in that way is if you have thoughts or ideas that you want to be considered as a whole, that I would essentially be collecting them and then compiling them in a manner that you are then able to maybe to guide your discussion a little differently than.
Back out to everyone.
Right. Rather than, for instance, you all coming at your next time, whenever that is, and saying, okay, I would like to talk about section A1. And then you talk about section A1. That's all up to you. There would be no deliberation in that process though.
Lauren? I feel it would give us a little time. I agree with Gregory, give us a little time with this. And I think we should be able to submit any suggestions, changes, ideas. I don't know if we go through Ryan to Lizzie or straight to Lizzie, but then to bring those back to us so we can at least be knowledgeable about what changes are being, you know, thought about. So then we can, you know, be prepared for that next meeting to say, yes, I agree with that, or I looked into that, I don't agree with it for whatever reason. But to have that information before our next meeting, I would appreciate that, but I don't know how other council members feel.
I know, I think, I just, just respond to what Lizzie said, you know, for example, you know, I think if councilman Clark, for example, sent some thoughts to the attorney and the attorney, you know, worked with the council, said, well, yeah, we could, we could word it this way. For us then to gather as a group, and I don't agree with a subcommittee, I think there's so much passion around this that we all need to be.
I think we all need to be involved in this.
That I could say then, okay, I see the red line here. This was a comment that, that Lizzie took from, from Joe. Joe, can you explain why you think this is important and what you are trying to accomplish by this? So I would like to be able to have that level of, of visibility on the process.
Couldn't Ryan, couldn't Ryan keep all of that, you know, our manager? Would that be not right for us to say, hey, this is what I want to change here? And him keep track of that and share that with all of us before we take it to her? Because I'm just thinking that would save a lot of time in her lawyer, lawyer piece.
Russ?
Let's truly workshop this. Let's put this on the agenda for a next workshop. Set aside 30 minutes, whatever it's going to take, have Lizzie online, open up to the public. I'd love to hear what the public thinks about the direction we're moving on this. I'm encouraged by what I've heard. I still think we have a ways to go. I do, I do think the council needs to be involved, but I would workshop this. This is a true work, in my opinion, this is a true workshop item. And two is, this is compliant with state laws. The attorneys have discovered, is it best practice? I don't know if this is best practice. I really don't. That's not a legal question. That's more of a, that's more of an opinion.
I think, I mean, I, I would say that I think an attorney who specializes in doing this, who's worked with other municipalities to do this would have a sense of, are we, is this a, you know, where does this fall? And I think we have to decide what is best practice. When Lizzie talked earlier about, here's the floor, we have to be here, but the ceiling, it's, I think, you know, we have to decide, does this cover what we think Sagatuck needs? And then given what we are solving for, Lizzie, is this, you know, is this our best work?
I think, man, I, I think that's a great idea. I think we should have everybody get their stuff into you before the next workshop. So when we do get to the next workshop, we can say, Joe said this, why, excuse me, councilman, yeah, two weeks, have it in by then, go through her and then hash it out at work.
So I'll point out, two weeks is the Maple Street and so.
And I'm not available, which is why I'm here today.
Yeah, we, we might, we might want to give this a month or, or set up a special time because I don't think we can do this in Maple Street and give them both our best brains.
I'm comfortable with the next workshop, not the next workshop, but the workshop following that.
I would be fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, fine with that.
And so did we agree that each of us will review this? We will send, I, to your point, Gregory, I get the idea of, but I think Ryan's got a pretty full plate and this is.
I'm trying to add.
Yeah, and this is, this is.
Well, let's make Jamie do it.
Yeah.
Jamie's like.
Yeah. And I'm, you know, she has more colleagues to draw upon for help than we do.
So either Wednesday preceding the second, pardon me, the second Monday on?
February 5th.
February 5.
February 5 is your.
Thank you.
And Lizzie, are you available to be with us? I mean, you can be remotely.
Yes.
Okay. Unless you prefer to, I mean, I'm also happy, I think it is valuable sometimes to have people here. So if, Lizzie, you have a preference, I would be fine if you can, if you would prefer to come.
May I suggest that I wait to make that recommendation until I receive the input? Because if there's not, there's not a lot of explanatory, I talk with my hands, I'm a mess on, on virtual. It's a lot of this. So, you know, if there's a lot of explaining or discussion or coordination, sometimes that's easier when you're in the room rather than on the screen. But if there's limited comments received or they're limited to one particular area, it may be well suited very easily to a virtual conversation.
And I'm worried about you driving back to Lansing.
I know, you've been so good to me.
Okay, and yeah, so we need to, so one other thing I would, my preference would be to be copied on people's feedback and Ryan. And the reason why I would like to is that I will be helping to facilitate the discussion. And so it will help me identify common themes, areas so that I struck, I can think about how to structure that in a way where we can all, you know, just, it helps me.
But for clarification, they'll all come out, all of the requests, all of the changes would come to everybody. They go to her.
They go to, they go to Lizzie, copy Ryan and me, but then Lizzie will, everybody will have visibility into everybody's comments. But I don't think we can hit copy all as we submit the comments.
So the route would be email Lizzie, copy the mayor and manager if we have any ideas for change.
Right. But then at the workshop, everybody will have visibility into everybody's comments.
If we can set a reasonable timeline to get those comments to me, I would, ideally, I think you're best served for a true workshop if I am able to get that back to you with your time to review it before February 5.
Yes.
So could we talk about a reasonable timeline that you all think is appropriate to get comments to me?
January 4.
I'm a mom, I'm up, I'm up all the time, it's fine. Looking at my calendar, certainly, middle of the preceding week would be great if I had everything by then. I think I could easily have it to by sometime that weekend, if not earlier.
Almost a month away. I mean, I would think we could at least give you a week and maybe even two weeks. I mean, since we were originally thinking we could do it in two weeks.
So we would have our responses to Lizzie by the 22nd or the 29th?
Lizzie, tell us.
No, that's up to you all. I, I will make.
The 22nd, thank you, Jamie.
January 22nd.
And then on the February 3rd is, Lizzie is when we would usually put out the packet.
Okay, great. Thank you for that information.
You're welcome, Madam Clerk.
So comments to Lizzie on the 22nd and.
Not the 29th, the 22nd.
The 22nd. To give.
Yeah. Well, my I suggest.
Lizzie enough time to review and Jamie enough time to have it in the packet.
That's a good chunk of time.
Yeah.
If I, let me say it this way, if the February 3 is the packet time for the February 5 meeting, and you all want more than two days, I would also be happy to distribute that electronically to you all if that's a preference prior to that timeline.
For what it's worth, I'll be on vacation the week of the 4th, but I think everyone knows how I feel about this, so.
I'll do my best to channel my inner Scott.
So responses to Lizzie by the 22nd, and then Lizzie will get them to us by?
Well, we'll say, in case, today was a weird day with employees misbehaving and lots of distractions, not ours, of course, other people. If we, if something goes awry, it'll certainly be no later than the packet deadline, but my goal would be to have it to you over that weekend so that you have it at some point in advance of that. I think, I want you to have time when you're not doing other day job things to really look at it.
Okay. So Lizzie, and what date is that Friday?
31st.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for the grace of that time to get that worked on. I appreciate it.
No, it's, what you've done so far is really good. I'm happy with what you've done so far.
Okay, any final thoughts or questions for Lizzie? And where did I put my agenda? My agenda, okay. Thank you, Lizzie. Please drive home safely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any correspondence? It doesn't, I don't think so. Council comments? Chris? I'm commented out. Okay, Russ?
Yeah, thank you. The only comment I would make about was a discussion item regarding working better together. I just want to say that I think that's something we should be focused on. I know there's other boards in our area, some of our neighbors have gone through similar processes, so we might want to reach out to the supervisor or manager to see what process they used. I think that would be helpful, but I also want to emphasize the fact that if I disagree with someone, that doesn't mean I hate your idea, it means I oppose it, or I have a differing opinion about it. That's where behavior needs to change, because I don't hate people when they oppose me. That has been said to me, Russ, you hate me because you, I said, no, I don't hate you, I just wanted to discuss your item, so.
Lauren?
Just piggybacking on that, you know, it's hard when you sit here and there's allegations that are made against you that you know to be false, and it's hurtful, let alone, it's on the scary side when you hear somebody that say, they say things publicly about you that you know to be not true. So, you know, I would like, you know, for all of us not to say things publicly when you've just heard it on the street about individual members of council or people in our audience, and just try to work together better in 2025.
Scott?
No further comments.
Gregory?
I think this was a good meeting. I'm glad that we had the talk that we did. I think we said it can be a very divided council. I don't think we really are on most items.
You're right, and that's a good point.
And I'd like to say that, you know, when it comes to most things, other than maybe one or two hot topics, I think all of us are on the same board, and this talk about witch hunting, let's stop that. I don't think there's witch hunting with different opinions, so, you know, we don't need to be like that. Also, I want to give Little Douglas a little love, like I like to do, and they've got their gallery stroll this weekend, Saturday from 12:30 to 5:00 p.m., where all of their galleries are going to have homemade soups from all the local restaurants, and so you can get a free little cup of soup and walk around Douglas and keep the winter spirit alive here in the Sagatuck Douglas area. When you're done there at the galleries, come to Sagatuck and shop at our stores as well. Thank you.
Joe?
Just to tie on Councilmember Gardner and Stanton, it is, there is a lot of divisiveness in this town, in this city, and it's a great place to be. I think people look at us as leaders, to the extent that we can work better as an entity. We're not going to, of course, agree, we all have our own opinions, and we all believe we're representing the town in our own best interests, and we're going to vote that way, but it is the power of the vote, and the people have empowered us to make that vote. And I think we need to do, as a group, need to do a better job of just recognizing that when things don't go our way, it's still the wisdom of this council that made the decision, and we should stand behind it. And to your point, I think we should, we can thread in a little bit more respectfulness going into 2025. I think we'll have a good year.
Great. I don't have anything to add, other than I thought that was a really productive discussion. I'm glad that we could go into closed session, and I look forward to everybody's input on the red line changes. And again, thank you, Lizzie.
Motion to adjourn. I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.